Evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting for Monday, November 18th. It's a couple of minutes past six. We just returned out of closed session. And our city attorney, Mr. Black, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
May I do it? Thank you.
So we'll open our regular session and we'll call to order the meeting. And Madam Clerk, would you please take role?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastineau?
Here.
Councilmember Shalone?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Holly?
Here.
And Mayor Enya.
Here, thank you. And would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you. Our first item tonight are acknowledgements. And the acknowledgement that we have will be presented at our next council meeting on December 2nd, when the people will be able to be here. Next is our consent calendar. Items two through five include the approval of our regular meeting minutes from November 4th and 12th, approval of warrant claims November 5th and 18th, and approval of our bi-weekly payroll reports for November 2nd and November 8th, and also consider and approve a resolution entitled, or a resolution number 2013-29, a resolution of the city council of the city of Creston City supporting the health in all policies, also known as H.I.A.P. Is there a motion for approval?
I was just gonna say, there's quite the group of people here tonight for the resolution, so I didn't know if you wanted to pull it off separately to allow public comment, or...
Why don't we do that? Why don't we go items two through four? Is there a motion to approve those items?
Some moved.
Second.
They've been moved in second to approve consent agenda items two through four. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Enya.
Yes. Item number five of the consent calendar is the approval of the resolution. And Mr. Palazzo, did you want to start?
Sure.
Okay. And then we'll take public comment.
Yeah, actually, the, this health in all policies presentation was presented to the city council about two meetings ago. And at that time, the city council, you know, provided staff direction to put a resolution on the agenda to adopt a sample resolution. And discussion was done at that time by Nanette Yandel. Did a staff report, gave the city council some background on Ms. Yandel's position and, you know, her relationship, you know, with, within the county and the kind of goals and missions that they're doing. So, tonight's staff does recommend adopting the attached resolution. Ms. Yandel may want to say, you know, something at this point, but any questions of the council?
Sure. Would you like to come up? I'll open it up for the public, and you can start.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, as you can see, this is an example of the collaborative approach that's needed with health in all policies. So we have people from the hospital and healthcare district and the county, as well as the school district. And so it's just, everyone is in support of health in all policies and seeing where it goes. And this is, for this area, this is the first really big step. And it's a way that we can have that collaborative motion in moving everything forward. So, I just really appreciate you hearing the presentation before and asking the questions that you have. And I work, I look forward to working with you on this further, step at a time.
And we're all unanimous in favor of it. That's why it's on our consent agenda, so that's good.
Wonderful.
Would anybody else like to speak?
I have a question, though.
Good.
What, what does, how do it constitute the city moving from eager to active? Because I think we've been pretty active in, you know, our crime-free multi-housing with no smoking and no smoking ordinances, working with TUP and, you know, the HEAL campaign. So what would make us move into the active stage?
What will make you move into that act? Because you're right, that's one of the things I had mentioned in that, in that report, is that a lot of the items are items that the city is already doing, but it's not necessarily getting credit for. So the HEAL campaign isn't necessarily aware of the work that's being done. And one of the things that we're doing with health in all policies, I'm creating in that report, and that report will be reflective, so that way they can have that information. And that's really what it is, they need to keep moving it forward.
So, and you're providing that more accurate information?
Yeah, I'll be putting it together for the city so that we can keep moving it forward.
We're just trying to get a better grade.
Yes, absolutely. That's the point, yes.
Thank you.
So there aren't any actual performance levels that we need to meet to move to active or fit?
There are certain performance levels, but one of the items that most of the cities, I'm trying to keep in mind what the different levels are, because some of them are a little bit arbitrary. But being, looking at your general plan and seeing, having that health analysis of your general plan is a really big component. So cities that are considered active, not only do they have the parks and some of the other policies, like the multi-family housing units, the crime-free, like all of these components, they have them put together, and then they have examples of how it's part of their overall city plan through that analysis of that general plan.
So, when you go, if you go on the website, you can see the cities that are active, and
it has, like, you can download the general plan to even see what that, what that looks like.
Okay. And I know that you said in, or maybe we said in the staff report, that you'll be working with city staff to do so?
Yes.
What, what, when I read that today, I was curious how much time that's gonna take and what the plan is.
That's a really good question. And that's actually the, one of the things that I'm hoping to get together with city manager about afterwards and talk about what's actually feasible, because that's another component that was in there, is whatever's feasible. So I'm not gonna take too much time, because I know that people don't have much of it. But figuring out whether it's gonna be, you know, one way of looking at it is having a representative of the city that sits with the health and all policies task force, so we make sure that, you know, it's not me in a nutshell analyzing this document, but we have people that are actually invested in it. So figuring out, a lot of those details I still have to work out, depending on what it is that ends up working for all of you.
It sounds to me like the planning commission might be a better avenue.
That's what I was, I was gonna ask you that. Does it have to be a staff member, or it could be planning commissioner or council members?
It's very flexible for what we want, which is one of the reasons for using the health in all policies approach, is it's flexible to what will fit for the city. So, so we can be, we can work and talk about those little details, and, you know, sometimes even if someone's like, you know, "I have some time now, and I want to hear what you guys are having to say, I want to be a part of the meetings, I want to know where you're at right now."
We have an opening on our planning commission?
Okay.
Should I give it to the city?
I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, that's, that's what health and all policies is all about, is connecting that planning, because it's about the environment.
Putting the two together.
Yeah.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to, to this? Appreciate you coming tonight. And she's doing a very good job.
I will move to approve.
That's item number five. Is there a second to item number five?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Would you pull the vote on that, Robin, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Enya.
Yes, thank you very much. Item number six is reports and presentations, and tonight we do have a presentation.
Mayor? I'm sorry to interrupt. Sure. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
But, you know, there were a couple of minor changes on the minutes. I just thought I'd mention.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we, I know we approved it already, but one of the names that was of the public commenters was named something other than, it actually is David Olkowski?
Okay.
And I know you probably didn't know his, his name, but I think it's O-L-K-O-W-S-K-Y, I think.
S-K-I.
K-I, maybe I, okay. And the other one on the, on the, on the face of the minutes for the November 12th meeting, we have November 12th correct, but it still says Monday. And I don't want anyone to look, a hundred years from now, I don't want them to look and say, "They really beat on Monday."
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And the rest of the council concurs on those two. We voted on the minutes already, but, okay, if no one's objecting, we'll include them.
I actually had two changes.
Oh, go ahead.
I can't, I can't find them, so just go through them.
Okay, when you come to them, maybe at the end of the meeting, we can talk about that. Item number five is a presentation, and we have Randy Hatfield, Fairgrounds manager here, to give us an update on the current status of the Delnor County Fair and fairground facilities. Welcome, Randy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Randy Hatfield, for the record. I'm the fair manager at the Delnor County Fair, also known as the 41st District Ag Association, which a lot of people don't realize that's a state agency. What, kind of bring you up to date on what the fair is involved in, what the fair board is planning to do. I believe you all have received a copy of some of our paperwork that we've been working on, our surveys, our studies that we've conducted recently in the last year. As you probably all know, about two years ago, we lost our funding from the state. Originally, money was coming to us from a horse racing. Even though we don't have horse racing here, the fairs were receiving a part of the handle winnings, you might say, that was, 2% of that was going into a kitty, or into a fund to support fairs. When I first got here 25 years ago, that fund was over $100 million going to the fair industry. It supported the fairs, it supported infrastructure, it supported operations, and also put money back into the horse, horse racing industry to help keep that going. Well, over the years, with competition from other gambling institutions, lotteries and so forth, that money, as of 2009, dropped below 20 million. That 20 million was just enough to go and be supported, to support the Horse Racing Commission and the things that they do. There was no more money available for fairs. Well, in 2009, 2010, they went and put us in the general fund. And that lasted one year. In 2011, we lost our funding, and we've been without funding ever since. To Delnor County, to our fair, that was approximately $200,000 in operational funds, which took one-third of our budget of operation out. Fortunately enough for, for us and the community, the fair board put away about a half million dollars in a reserve fund. So, we've been living off the reserve funds for the last two years. We project that we will be out of money at the end of 2016, about November of 2016. We feel that, we decided that, after coming back from a meeting in November of 2012, where the secretary of, of ag was talking to all the CEOs and fair managers about funding, about fairs, they explained to us that they really enjoy the fairs and support the fairs, but they have said they had no money to help the fairs, but they did have money to help close the fairs. So we really knew at that point that we were in trouble. That it was really left up to the individual communities and counties to handle their own problems. We weren't gonna get any help from the state, and we weren't gonna get any help from our association. And so with that in mind, we came back and started developing a plan of how we would put together a program that would save this fair. We decided to do a survey. After doing a brief study, based on that study, it recommended that we do a survey. We did a survey, which came back that told us some interesting things about the fair and the community, and the, and the support there. The results of the, of the survey was that 88% of the general public had something good to say about the fair, which is really good. When it started talking about money and how we were gonna promote the fair, or how we were gonna save the fair, and in this particular case, we looked at a sales tax increase of a quarter percent for a seven-year period. There were 69% of the survey that said that they were supported. Knowing that that still is a difficult challenge, because we have to have a two-thirds vote if this was gonna go on the ballot. And of course, with any survey, there's a margin error of five to, five to six percent off, one way or the other. But it's not that far off. We felt as a fair board that it was important that we had to go ahead and go forward. We have no choice. There's no other option. We, if it came back at 50%, then we would start probably thinking, maybe we got some issues here. But because it was so close, we decided to go forward on this. So, our plans, we are in the process, at this particular time, of going through the LAFCO process to create a special district for the fair. A separate entity, locally controlled, and it would be elected officials that would be the board, board directors. What we found from the survey, that people want a local control. They want us, they wanted everything kept here. They want it, if the money was gonna get passed, they want to know that it was gonna go directly to the fair, and that they had control over what was gonna happen there. So, we're going through the LAFCO process at this particular time. We are working on information and the legalities of how do we get the tax issue on the ballot. And so there's a lot of things that we have to do to make sure this happens, and legally. We're trying to get this done by November of 2014. So our tight, we have a very tight window to get all these things done. But the reason why we're going for that is, is it's a major election. Anytime after that, we will start getting very close to the end of our life as far as money. So we need to know early out if we have support or we don't. So this is basically where we're at. We've got 85 acres within the city limits, and truthfully, the alternative to this, if we don't receive it, the lights will turn off on the, on the buildings over there. The buildings would be closed up and not be used for any other uses. And I don't think we can afford to have that happen.
Is that because it would be still estate property?
Pardon me?
Is that because it would still be estate property?
Yes.
So they don't have any kind of a plan for closed-down fair?
No. This is one of our topics, that discussions is, what are they gonna do? And we probably will see what they're gonna do in the next six months to a year, because there will be a couple of fairs that will close up, and we'll see what they do. That is a question from this one particular fair manager. She says, "What do I do? Do I just close the gate and walk off?" I says, "Well, I think you'd better give them a call, say you're going out the door." Unfortunately, you know, we don't seem to be getting a lot of support or answers, I guess, is, is the big problem. It's very frustrating for myself and, and others who have, have looked for, have, after all these years, having to deal with the state and deal with all their instructions and guidance and so forth, that there isn't much there at this point. And so it, it is quite frustrating.
We feel your pain. We went through the same process with our redevelopment agency. You know, shut it down, take our money, and then the plan that they put in place was completely a mess.
Yeah. So this is our direction. We, we ask for, as we go along, guidance, support as we go into this. And if you have any questions at all down the line, or even tonight, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
I, I have a question. Has your board ever considered charging for parking, like, $2 a car? I mean, that would generate some revenue.
We used to. We used to charge for parking, and it got to a point where we were paying almost as much to collect it than what we were actually bringing in. It's still not out of the question.
Yeah, because some of county does it, and I don't think that they lose money.
We dropped it about five or six years ago, probably about six years ago. And what we did, in exchange for dropping that parking fee, we raised the gate a dollar. And we made a lot more money. What we're finding out over the, in a small community like this, people are very frustrated by the time they get to the main gate, if they have to be, keep dipping into their pocket before they get to the gate. I used to sit out in the parking lot while, while they, these people are volunteers who pick, pay the gate, and it was not fun. They should've got hazardous pay out there. So, and then plus the fact, the profit on it was, was not much. To make it worthwhile, you have to charge five to eight bucks a car to get in there. And I don't think we're, in this community, ready for that. By changing the, changing up to a buck, we made a lot more money doing that than collecting the parking.
And so what do you charge right now for an adult and a child and a senior?
Into the fair?
Yeah.
$8 for adults, and then it is $4 for a child 6 through 12, 5 and under are free. And every day, we have a special, so you never have to really pay that price.
But that's a day, for the whole day?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say that I think you're doing it right by getting out in front of it this far. I think that, you know, a lot of people, when they're given the ability to support local, instead of, you know, when the money is going through the state, they'll feel more comfortable with it. So educating the, the community over the next year is gonna be really important. And then I wanted to say that maybe, you know, look at the group that did the library measure, because they've been through this twice, getting that put on the ballot, and even though it wasn't successful, I'm sure they would probably have a lot of insight.
Yes, Rick?
I just have one quick question and one quick comment. The comment is, the city council is committed to doing what it can to cure some of the blight problem that we have all around, both Creston City and Delnor County. And the idea that, that you could close your doors, and we'd have the largest blight issue ever seen, probably, by the, by the Creston City area. So that's, that's something we need to avoid at all costs, and I appreciate your efforts tonight. So, but that said, in looking at your survey, and I know that you weren't really looking at this, but were there, were there discussions about what that might do to the actual sales in Delnor County? In other words, I, I've had the, I, I've, I've had the advantage of hearing your, your discussion on several occasions, and I, and I've appreciated each one of them, but it causes me to think every time, and, which is a good thing usually. And, you know, you wonder where the threshold is, where people will get in the car and go to Oregon, instead of paying all the taxes we do here in California. And, and was that a part of the survey, or did they, do we have any idea how that might impact the city?
I think that, that was, you know, I've looked at that briefly, not in depth. We have a economic impact that the fair has on the community as of 2010. Now, they do, they, as I understand it, there's one gonna be coming out in 2012, or coming out now for 2012, which will show the impact, based on the, based on our attendance and what we bring into the, into the area on a year-round basis, the total amount of attendance, not just the fair, and based on the activities that we bring in, and what the sales impact is gonna be. That 2010 shows you how many people we put to work, or because of the fair, what the work is, what the income is, and so forth, and what the tax income is. Now you lose that. And now, we're talking seven years. The trade-off, we're talking seven years versus a permanent shutdown. So what, what's worse? I suppose that's the question. A permanent shutdown, where you have no facility at all, no income, no jobs, no nothing, versus a seven-year revenue coming in for a quarter percent, a quarter of 1% for seven years. Now, I think the trade-off is obviously, rather save that area, save that income, and then let the fair and the new agency work on bringing in more stuff into this community, more activities, so that everybody feeds off of it. I was thinking about that question also, before I got up here tonight. One of our events, it's a really, when we have the Latin American parties and so forth at our fairgrounds, Denny's wants to know, because they get blown away. That is just a small factor, or an impact, what that fair has on the local economy. That's just there. Now you start looking at the 700 people that came in three weeks ago for the Jehovah Witness weekend, they're all coming in from out of town. Where they gonna stay? Hotels, et cetera, et cetera. Where they eating? They're eating in town. So I think the trade-off is, you're better off having this versus nothing at all.
Thank you very much, Randy, and please keep us updated on what's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item number seven, which is an update on our dog park at Beachfront Park. Mr. Palazzo?
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to have Mr. Taylor discuss this item. And what this item is, it's, it's really just, you know, kind of an update and a way for staff to get out the word that we are going to have a public meeting to get some ideas and feedback on, on the dog park. And so I'd like to have Mr. Taylor do a presentation. Just give me a second, I gotta pull power for presentation and get started.
Okay.
Mr. Palazzo just pointed out where we like to, kind of using tonight's meeting as a launching point, or just kind of get the word out for upcoming meeting, which will be on December 5th.
Could you, could you speak into the microphones? It's really hard to hear you.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Okay, here we go. Kind of titled "The Crescent City Unleashed." Screen comes down.
We prefer leashed.
Well, hopefully the idea is you have a dog park, so they can be unleashed. Go ahead and move forward. Again, it's all started with the Beachfront Park master plan process. We got a lot of input from the public. And one of the, kind of the outstanding features was this dog park. Got a lot of support. Again, there's the Beachfront Park master plan. So through the planning process, kind of one of the things was to figure out how everything's gonna fit in the park, and where the best fit is for it. So obviously, you see up here in the kind of northwestern corner, is where we've kind of carved out the area for the dog park. And then go through the process, we actually received some additional CDVG funding that came from some other projects that didn't go through. So it allowed us to get some more detailed plans for features of Beachfront Park, and one of them being the dog park. So we've got some additional planning, this is kind of an updated site plan for the dog park. As I say, I don't wanna go through too much tonight, because obviously, this is just, we're just trying to get the word out that we're gonna have this planning meeting. We can see this kind of the more detailed plan, and this is what'll be discussed, obviously, more in-depth at the meeting we have December 5th. Again, here's the notice, inviting the public, and anybody who's interested, please come on down and give your input, and love to hear your ideas and, about the park. And also, I'll mention that these flyers are up front here, so if anybody'd like to grab one on their way out, please do so. Kind of lining the meeting agendas, we'll be discussing the kind of the concept, design, adding features or subtracting features, discuss the facilities, operation, maybe names, naming the park, and then funding. I'll go through these briefly here, design. Again, we'll go through what are the, how the park's gonna look, how it's gonna lay out, how the park's gonna work, and those are the things we'll, we'll work on. Just briefly touch on this, a lot of parks have kind of a large and a dog area and a small dog area, and that's kind of how ours is designed. So we'll talk about that. Again, they kind of have these, these little introduction areas, where they kind of enter the park. Facility... Facilities, again, what, what are you gonna want inside the park is obviously the biggest point is fire hydrant. Are we gonna wanna see fire hydrants in the park? Signage is gonna be discussed, obviously, and rules are gonna be very important. Hours of operation's gonna be important. Again, the little cleanup stations.
Are they in dog speak?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Are they in dog speak? For the dogs' rules?
So you have your little mits and your little cleanup stations.
We'll, we'll have an interpreter.
Again, kinda features, do we wanna see obstacle courses in the park? Special events where, you know, how's the park gonna be, we'll be able to facilitate, say if there's dog shows or little dog Olympics, those type of events. Again, can, can we use it as a cross-training for a canine? Will they be able to use the park, maybe have some obstacle courses and some different training? The idea is to get the whole community involved. It's a community park, we wanna get everybody involved and get everybody to come on down. Again, naming the park, we threw a few out there, but that'll be discussed. Funding, and this, this is really gonna be key for this meeting is this funding. We don't have the funds right now, so we'll discuss different options, grants possibly. There might be some small grants out there. Maybe we'll look at other ways, sponsorships for the park. Donations will be big, either some materials or labor. The idea is to get the community involved too and fundraising for this park, similar to what was done for Kids Town. Again, I'm just kinda ending it with the flyer, so we just wanna get the word out and have everybody please come down, December fifth. It'll be at five thirty PM. And we'll be at the wastewater treatment plant, which is two ten Battery Street.
Thank you Eric. I wanted to ask you something. Will you have basic costs at that meeting? I mean, just the basic part?
Right, we'll try to get some preliminary, preliminary cost estimates based on the design that we have now.
Because, you know, there may be some local groups who wanna help fund that.
Hopefully. I mean, that's what we're hoping.
Probably like, you know, like a water, a water station would cost X amount of dollars and a bench would cost this much and some may wanna, wanna do that.
Hey Mayor, this is a good opportunity to get ideas for fundraisers.
Right.
How do we, you know, raise money for the park, naming rights for the park, you know, something to that nature so we can, you know, get, get this implemented as soon as we can?
And how much basically it would cost to operate it by the city each year? What the city's cost would be for mowing the lawn, repairs, just a basic cost?
Correct, and that's part of the, like, touched on operations, we'll discuss that with the city.
You know, one time I went to like a canine, uh, demonstration, like, it was like a two-day event, I think it was Santa Rosa, but I'm not sure. Where law enforcement officers with their canine dogs from all over came. And it didn't look like it costs very much to put it on other than just organizing the event because it was just the officers and their dogs. And they would do all of their tricks and, you know, show, put on a little show.
That's a good idea, 'cause we have two dogs.
And it was, it was fun to watch. It was, and there were people came from all over to watch it.
Any other comments?
Oh, I was gonna say the dog, dog shows are really a big industry. I've attended one in Central Point. One of my, my best friends from high school, she's showing dogs now and, you know, you have your motel and your food and, and, you know, all of that. So I think that's a really good idea.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. Any other comments on this? Well, we'll look forward to that meeting. Once again, it's Thursday, December fifth, at five thirty at our city wastewater treatment plant on Battery Street. Thank you for that presentation. Before I go to public comment, Kelly, you had a couple of things for the.
I'm sorry for this. I thought I had highlighted it, but apparently I didn't. Um, just very quickly, on item number four, where you said that I stated that, um, anyone with an interest in the city should be allowed to say, have a say, but it's the law, it's illegal to subsidize, subsidize any utility that is operated by the government? I'm not sure if I said that exactly, but my intent was that, um, it's not illegal to subsidize your utility, but you cannot subsidize one payer mix over another. So in other words, we can't arbitrarily say we're going to charge, you know, maybe the senior citizens less money than we are somebody else. So that's what I meant by that. And then the other one was, um, in our council reports, it says, um, that I, that I am on the, I was seated to represent the city council on the center coast. And it's the center coast strategic options study for the Camden Group. Yeah. And that was it.
That's a long word. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is communications, and that's the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Noted however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include a placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of it. After your name, recognition from the mayor, please state your name, city or county residency, and public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment at this time? Yes, come on up.
Thank you. I actually just wanted to make a comment about the dog park because we're talking about health and all policies.
Could you give your name again?
My name is Nanette Yandel. And the dog park is a perfect example of health and all policies because as people are gonna be going out to bring their dogs out, that means they're gonna be getting outside. It means they're gonna be walking around. It means they're gonna be interacting with others. So we're talking about building that social capital of the community as well as getting people to exercise more. And so I just thought that was a, a perfect segue. I just wanted to add that about the, the dog park.
Thank you. That's very nice of you.
Maybe the building healthy communities or the foundation would have some kind of funding.
Any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, then I'll close public comment. We'll move on to our next item, which is a public hearing and we have no public hearings tonight. Continuing business, we have none. Under new business, number eight. Consider an approved agreement for the authorization to encroach on City of Crescent City easement for specified purposes between the City of Crescent City, California Municipal Corporation and the city, and the Crescent City Harbor District. Mr. Taylor?
Well, Mr. Plazza? Or Mr. Black?
Due to the fact that I also represent the Harbor District, I have not involved myself in this matter. And, uh, uh, Conflict Council, Harriet Steiner has, uh, written and approved the agreement. I do notice that the signature block for Ms. Steiner refers to her as the city attorney and I think that should be changed to special counsel for the City of Crescent City.
Okay, we'll note that. Mr. Plazza?
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to have Mr. Taylor discuss this item.
Sure. Mr. Taylor?
As you already mentioned, this is a, the Harbor District had approached us about the development of their coastal trail. So we received a letter from the Harbor District back in September. They'd received some funding, I believe, through the California Coastal Conservancy. And they actually have recently obtained their coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission. So part of their overall project is to install their segment of the California Coastal Trail. Let's give you a good idea here. We're their, their section. It's gonna start here. Here's Sunset Circle along here. It'll actually come down through the, this Houston Street right away that we're discussing. And then of course it kinda goes along the dredge piles, down through the harbor and then out along through the rest of the harbor there. Okay, here's a, a plan of what they're proposing. The segment that we're looking at is approximately a hundred and eighty feet long by about ten feet wide. The coastal trail section that'll come through our easement. So again, the trail portion itself, which is here, will be covered with asphalt. And they're also proposing to put in about sixteen-foot-wide access road. This'll just be a gravel road. This is so they can maintain and get to the, their dredge piles that they have down. They kinda use this as access right now. And also along here you'll see this'll have, it'll be lined with a split rail fencing to kinda delineate the trail. So this is the subject property that we're looking at. And you recall probably a few, few months ago, we just went through a similar process with another easement that we had a little further down the one oh one. Uh, but this is, it's a paper street known as Houston Street. It's not developed, obviously. It's kind of formally used. It has a bit of a gravel pathway there. I believe Harbor personnel mostly use that to get out for maintenance reasons. Again, this is part of the Walton Dock subdivision and under that agreement, it's hard to read here, but again, gives us authority. It spells out where these easements are, these paper streets here. And just a couple of sentences here basically says that we can develop within those easements as long as for the public use. And then here's a parcel map. It kinda shows, you know, currently what it looks like. Here's the Houston Street right away. And again, the agreement's real specific. It says that the trail has to be developed, maintained for public use. Uh, that the harbor is responsible for all the development, the cost of development, and that the Harbor District is also responsible for all maintenance, maintenance costs. One of the issues that came up for us would be development, future development for ease, uh, access to some of those parcels. So also written into the agreement is, you know, the city can come in and modify that as needed, you know, for access, but we still need to maintain that trail. I put this up, it kinda shows the.
Did you say we? I'm sorry, did you say we need to maintain their trail?
Well, I guess that we would have to put it, so for example, if we had to come in and put a driveway in across the trail, then we would require that the property owners would put sidewalks in. So that would maintain that public access through there. So in other words, we can't go in and, and remove the public access, make sure it's facility. Uh, again, it's a, it's a, it's a good project. Uh, this has a lot of connectivity for the harbor and the city. And I kinda threw this up and it shows, you know, this is a section of the coastal trail that runs to the city now. I kinda have formal trail, which is in red. Uh, kind of informal is where it hits Sunset Circle. It's not really, really well laid out right now. Hopefully in the future we'll be able to develop that portion better. And then this is where it'll connect up with the harbor's proposed trail segment.
So this'll go all the way from, um, Point St. George parking lot all the way to the harbor now?
Correct. So the idea of the Cali- California Coastal Trail basically extends from the northern border all the way down to the southern border. So we're looking at putting in the final pieces for Delmar County portion.
All right. That's great.
That's about the, my presentation. That's all I have. If there's any questions.
Any council questions?
I would just say that the city attorney verbiage would need to be changed throughout the document.
What word did he use? Special counsel? Special counsel?
Yeah.
Okay, we will do that. Catherine, do you have a comment?
Uh, I'm really excited. I'd like to ride my bike over to the harbor and that Sunset Circle area is really kind of rough going. You kinda need a mouthguard or something when you're riding your bike, so I'm excited about it. I think it'll be, um, really good for tourists and locals.
Any other comments?
Good to see progress.
And open it for public. Any public comment on the section of the harbor trail that's gonna be put in? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion.
I'll move to approve the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in the second to, for authorization for an agreement for the encroachment. Would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastinow?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Enya.
Yes, thank you. Item number nine, our last business item this evening, is the nomination and selection of the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem for two thousand fourteen. However, starting next council meeting, December second, two thousand thirteen. Is there a motion?
I would.
I would move to select, uh, Mr. Rick Hawley as our next mayor.
I'll second.
It's been moved in the second. Any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? It's unanimous. Are there any nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
I would move, uh, to nominate, uh, Ron Gastinow for Mayor Pro Tem for two thousand fourteen.
Is there a second?
Only if he says Santa Claus can come back.
I take it that's a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. I, I had, I wanted to say a few things.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, both of you. Upon, upon leaving office tonight, I, I wanted to talk a few things about my fellow councilmen.
You're not leaving office. You're leaving the chair.
Leaving the chair, that's true. Another year for office. Leaving the chair, thank you. First, I'd like to thank my fellow council members for a great year. We're all, we all do this together. It's not an individual effort. I wanted to thank the city employees for all their great work and we can see that around town. We now have fifty-five city employees compared to seventy members just a few years ago. And things may take a little longer to do, but they get done. And I also wanna thank them for the pay cut they took this year and they're doing more work for less pay. Our main, one of our main projects, not a project, but main goals, as all of us unanimously did, was blight. And I just wanted to go over a few things that I remember that we've done for blight this past year. The first thing was the S-Curve building that's down now, and some people don't even remember that building being up for all those years. That's gone. The Fifth and G Street building, I wanna thank the county again for that two-story, it used to be a planning department building. It is gone. It looks really nice there now. Two old houses in the Seventh and H Street area are gone. Uh, the Townhouse Motel, south of town, is making all their repairs and it's becoming a regular hotel that you would wanna go to now. In fact, they're almost done with the repairs, aren't they? Yes, that's good news. That's part of our blight. The old house that's falling down at Third and G Street will be coming down very shortly. And some people may not know this yet, but the old Carl's Jr. Building, also known as Alberto's, the yellow building in the Rite Aid parking lot at Fifth and M Street, will be burned down by the city fire department and the county fire district and other firefighters, hopefully next weekend. So that'll be coming down very shortly. I don't know if it's still scheduled for next weekend, but it's gonna be shortly.
I think we're working on air quality permits for that. It'll be Sunday morning.
Sunday morning, good. So those are, that's, those are like eight items that we are really moving on with blight. And you can see it around town and we get compliments all the time for being aggressive with blight. We're gonna continue that. And that's all of our council. Also, the city cleanup that we just did of our property behind the, where the old mill site was, behind the theaters. Here's something that's, that I learned from the city manager today, is that they collected over twenty-two thousand five hundred pounds of trash. That's eleven tons of trash, and that does not include recyclables. And many, many people have thanked us for clearing that. That's our city property and it's now clear. And if you get a chance, take a look back there. That's a lot of work that they did. New construction coming up. We, our council worked on this throughout the year. The old Patio Motel property, which is on Sixth and H Street, the old Patio Hotel. We bought that property, the city bought it. The city burned it down in a fire exercise. I don't know if it was earlier this year or last year. I can't remember the exact time. A lot of people came to see that. That's when you had your fire hat on, was it this year? That.
It was still here, so it must've been two years ago.
Two years ago. Well, Danco Corp. Corporation of, out of Arcata, are gonna build some senior apartments there, two-story apartments with elevators. And that is gonna help our senior community. We get, we get accused by a few people of not helping our seniors and not helping people less fortunate. We're doing it all the time. We may not answer every accusation because we don't need to. You can see it on the work that we're doing. And that's one right there. Now, I wanted to talk just for a couple of minutes about grants. People always ask, or some people ask, what are you doing about grants? Why don't you try to get a grant? We've received over four million dollars in grants. Let me tell you what we're using them for. We're gonna use the RV park. The city owns the RV park at the S-Curve. We have almost seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in a grant to improve that RV park and you'll be seeing that over the next year or so. We received over a million dollars to rehabilitate our sewer that's underway right now on Second Street. That sewer is the main collector for almost all of our city on the number and letter streets. And I'm, as I believe, I was told, it's a clay pipe right now that we're taking out, built a long time ago. So that, is that correct? It's clay. Also, some of that one point two million dollars went to assist RHS, Rural Human Services, and Harrington House. And of course Harrington House and RHS work with domestic violence. They work with people to bring them lunches and food, and that's part of what we do. We also have over a million dollars for our fire hall that we have to structurally update to comply with the law, federal law plus, so that fire trucks can be used in the, in the event of an earthquake, so they can get out. So that, that has to be redone. Also, we're spending a lot of mon- we have a grant that we received for the senior apartments that are off Harding Street. Millions of, um, the government. that are off Harding Street. Millions of the government awarded that grant, but millions of dollars into that is coming in for community, for rehab work, and that's going to put local people to work, to work on those projects. And you know, I'm sure I missed some, but, but this is a lot of things that the council and the staff are doing that are very, very busy, and people don't hear about it all the time. So that's why I wanted to take a few minutes. And finally, I wanted to say that, you know, being council members, we know it carries a lot of responsibility. And we represent everyone in our city, no matter what economic situation you find yourselves into. And as your council members, we serve on many committees and belong to various groups and organizations to help our community. We do this as council members and then on our own time, that we never really talk about because I don't, we don't think it needs to be said. We're here to represent our whole community. When I hear people talk about and say that they don't care, that we don't care, and that, that most of the time it's because they can't get their own way on something. But we have to look for the good of the whole community, and that's what we do. And we do it together. We do it together. Some people say, you know, you guys never fight. You know, you're all the same. We're not all the same. We're just responsible and we handle it responsibly.
You should see the fire in the back room.
Kelly and I smiled together, but we get in some good discussions. We, we do it responsibly. You know, we serve on boards like the Senior Center, RHS, Rotary, Sutter Coast Hot, Sutter Coast, like Kelly just said, Chamber Board, and that's just a few. Some of them are council things, others aren't. We just do it for the community. You know, and as a council, we are doing many positive things in our community. And I would just like to thank the vast mature, majority of our city residents for having the confidence in us. They're not, they don't come to council meetings. They just know that we'll do the proper job. And if not, we'll hear from them. They'll call us. And so it's been a very good year for me. I'm very appreciative of my fellow council members for having me be the mayor this past year. And I look forward to our future, and I think we're doing a lot of good things for the city. All of us are. So thank you for that. We're going to move on now to city council. Go ahead.
Before you do that, I, I just want to thank you, Rich, Richard, for putting in such a great year. Hearing that list of accomplishments is a little intimidating to me, going in and sitting in that, in that chair. You're leaving some big shoes to fill.
That's not me. That's the whole council.
But-
Well, and the list, the list is big every year. We, this, for such a small city, we accomplish a great number of tasks.
We do. But I also wanted to say I appreciate the system we have with a, with a Mayor Pro Tem and a mayor. Because I've had an opportunity to basically apprentice with Mr. Aneah for the year. And Ron Gastinow will be doing the same with me. And so I, I think it makes the transition that much smoother. And so it's been great working with you, and thank you again for your commitment.
You're welcome. Another word for apprentices, cup tag, having him come to meetings with me.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I want to thank the mayor for his leadership and say congratulations to our new mayor and new Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Holly and Mr. Gastinow.
Yes. Legislative matters.
Wait, I would like to thank the mayor also.
I want to hear this.
I, I don't comment very often, but as a new council member, your leadership and guidance has been very appreciated this year, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Well, let's move on to our final items. Legislative matters? Are there any legislative matters, Mr. Plato?
No legislative matters.
Okay. Any matters from the council on legislation? City managers' report and city council directives, Mr. Plato?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things to report out this evening to the city council. Two items. First, just, you know, it's more of a thank you to city staff and our partners for the efforts that we did behind the Jed Smith Center and all the cleanup efforts. We had a lot of staff involved. Chief Plack was out there, I think, every day, kind of monitoring Eric Taylor, Queer, Jason Wiley, and multiple, you know, city crews moving brush. We have quite a big pile of brush out there, and that will be probably another fire burn at some point in time. We, and we had a lot of partners, you know, the Fish and Wildlife, the Fairgrounds, Fire Safe Council, Alder Camp, you know, all came together to help us do that cleanup. So really appreciate it. Really looks good. And I want to thank everybody for that. The, the second item I had to report on, on is about the pool. And, you know, a couple of little positive things is, is we do have a new shift supervisor for the pool started today, Kelsey Thompson. And the opposite side of that is, you know, typically with the pool, we have about fifteen part-time staff, including our two full-time staff that operate, you know, the pool facilities. We've had several positions where people go on to get other jobs throughout the community, and we're down to nine. And that's very difficult to, you know, continue our operations. And the interim, and Matt and I had quite a discussion, you know, today on trying to how to fill the interim, the, the best way to do that at this point is to have a pool closure between Monday and Thursday from seven to seven forty-five. Basically, the aquatics and exercise, lap, swims, have it temporarily closed starting December first while we hire.
Is it PM or REM?
PM.
PM.
And this is my advertisement for the newspaper and all in the community that we are advertising for lifeguards wanted. And we typically have several times throughout the year where we train, you know, Matt trains the lifeguards and gets them certified. We move that up. We would like to, you know, get a class as soon as we can, as soon as we get enough people that are interested in these positions so we can kind of restaff up-
Restaff.
On, on that. So again, this is a temporary, just so we can cover, you know, the time, you know, right now, you know, just not enough people to cover the amount of hours that we have that pool open at this point.
Okay. We'll move on then to reports.
I had a quick question.
Okay.
That's okay.
How many people will that be affecting in the, that seven?
It, it's about twenty-two people average, you know, per day. And that, and that was kind of the least impact on the numbers of people. You know, Matt did an analysis for me. And the, any other times that we were looked at impacted probably twice or three times that amount. So that's kind of the least amount of impact on our customers.
And have we talked to those people? Are they going to feel like, I mean, are, I guess my question is, have the majority of, of that group of people prepaid, like a yearly fee to be there, or?
No, actually, that is the time in the evenings. And if I'm incorrect, and Matt, please step up and talk about this, but that's the time where we collect actually more revenue at the door. So these people are not the prepaid, you know, pass members are more, you know, paying the revenue at the door. You know, the, the pass members are more early mornings that have been prepaid. So it's less impact on the prepaid customers.
And approximately, how long will we have to do this?
We're, until we, we're going to try and hire lifeguards as quickly as we can. So it, you can let that impact as little as possible.
Maybe reach out to the college?
We're, you know, doing all of our standard reaching out and, you know, distributing that. It's just, you know, we have a, you know, small pool up here, no pun intended, of, you know, resources of, of people. And, you know, Matt does an excellent job of training, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of the training teaches a lot of good skills-
Mm-hmm.
-for the young adults, and they move on to other, you know, jobs.
Matt, have you ever gone up to the high school and talked to the kids?
I know a couple of high school kids that are lifeguards now.
Yes. Yeah, I still have a few.
Yes.
Almost every time I go to the high school and have them put it in their daily bulletin.
Mm-hmm.
I've posted flyers there. I've posted flyers at College of the Redwoods.
Great.
We advertise in the paper. RHS. I, I'm not sure why the last two classes I've offered, the, the one in May, two people signed up, and the one in September, zero. That's why we're in the state we're in now. So looking for creative ways to generate excitement about working at the pool. So if you have any ideas about that, let me know.
Typically, is, I'm sure it's minimum wage?
We're twenty-five cents above minimum, so we're eight, we start at eight-twenty-five.
Typically, how many hours a week do the kids work?
That's flexible. I, I have some that don't want to work more than five or six because they're so busy in extracurricular activities. Others will work twenty, twenty-five.
Okay.
It, it's just on an individual basis.
Okay.
Let's hope we get some new ones right away.
Do you have a Facebook page?
I hope I get the word out.
Does the pool have a Facebook page?
Yes, and I've posted on the Facebook page.
Great.
Your question about the passes, those people who only come in the evening that have purchased a pass, of course, I'm going to extend their pass to, to cover this time that-
Great.
That we're going to be close.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I have kind of an unusual idea.
Yes, Rich.
Do you ever consider retirees that, I mean, there might be some fit retirees that could, that could function as lifeguards. And I don't know how you'd find-
I would love to have some retirees.
I was one at twenty. I ca, I'm not going to do it now. Anyway, somebody else might.
Well, if you have some in mind, please send them my way.
I think, I think the lifeguard mayor sounds really good.
I actually, I inquired today, I inquired today if council could come and be lifeguards for me, and I was told that wouldn't work out. But, so I, I, I thought of you guys. Thanks.
You're right on.
Right. Thank you for that report.
Actually, that's true. We did talk about it.
Catherine, did you want to have any reports for committees or anything?
I have to compose myself here a minute. Let's see, I attended the Delano Solid Waste Authority meeting just as a, as a public person interested in what's going on there. And you've sent out the revised RFP, and I don't know what the deadline is for that, but one of you that are on that board might-
Next month sometime.
Okay. And then the Local Transportation Commission, we had our meeting last week as well. And the, there will be a tour with Congressman Huffman and some other local elected officials on December twentieth, I believe it is.
That's the new date, yeah.
And then we adopted for the, was it the, at the STIP?
Oh, yes.
For, we had three priority projects adopted. This is just one pot of funding. It's not for everything, but the Fred Haight Drive, and then Planning Program and Monitoring for these projects that are under the purview of the Local Transportation Commission. And then traffic calming on Highway one-on-one, both north and south, which I think is really critical for health and safety issues. And I wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and mention that in the November issue of Western Cities Magazine for elected city officials, that there is an article from the Institute for Local Government for helping to promote public trust and confidence in local government. And I found a quote on the website today. It says, "Management is doing things right. Leadership is doing the right thing." And that's by Peter Drucker. And I believe that the city staff, who's done such a great job for our water rate study and the city council, is doing what's in the best interest of the community.
Thank you. Astralla?
Before you move on, can you answer the, I think it was H-SIP funding that approved a project on Parkway Drive? What is that project? I, I know that Ninth Street was not chosen, so I was curious what the Parkway Drive project was.
Parkway Drive was, they are going to put lines, not lines, but marks in the middle of the road there in case you wander off the, go too far to the left.
Mr. Weir may be able to answer that.
Yes, Mr. Weir. I was surprised that ours was not funded yet, but we're going to reapply under some other funding for Ninth Street.
Yes, quite honestly, so was I. I thought the, our Ninth Street project had an excellent chance of, of being funded. So it is a little bit of a surprise that it didn't, but-
That's why I wanted to know about this Parkway project.
So the Parkway project, from my understanding, is basically it's a re-striping of it. It's also installing what they call rumble strips.
That's it.
So those are those, those marks along the side of the road where if you drift off to the side, it makes that loud sound. So they're going to do that, and then all the thought is that it'll decrease, you know, people will do fall asleep on that long straight drive. It'll wake them back up, keep them centered.
Yeah. That was the only project under those funds they approved for this county.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes, it is. I've seen that list. Kind of surprised me, but-
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But we should have a great chance for next time. It's just going to be a little delay.
Exactly. And so we're going to continue to collect the accident data. And like I said, the cost benefit analysis on that project was very high. And we feel that we do have a competitive project that'll, we'll apply for next time.
Mr. Hall?
Thank you. I, too, attended a couple of the meetings that Catherine mentioned. The Altico meeting, and at that Altico meeting, probably we'll always be talking about last chance grade. That's, that's certainly on everyone's mind right now. Also attended the Solid Waste Management Committee meeting, and, and we are still looking for a consultant to take a look at, at the, the JPA itself and, and, and give us some guidance on how to proceed to make the Solid Waste Management Authority or some other arrangement even better for the, for the ratepayers. We went to the, I went to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, otherwise known as the IGRC. And it, it's an environment where many, almost all of the, the agencies that, that participate in, in services to this community, it's an opportunity for us to get together and talk about what each is doing so that, so that we all know how we can interact and, and support each other. So that was interesting. And of course, Blight is always on our minds, and it seems like it's on the county's minds too. And, and they want to find more ways to interact. You know, that leads me to the two-by-two meeting, which is, was two city people, two, two county supervisors. And, and we did have a meeting just recently on, on the fifteenth. It was a good meeting. This was something that, that we've done before, and it was encouraged in the last grand jury report. And, and so I thought the meeting went well, and, and we have some things in common that we're looking at. And, and again, Blight came up. And so, so we're, we're taking a look at other ways we might interact in a positive way. So that's what I did.
Kelly?
Thank you. I was going to ask just for an update on if we were moving forward with putting together the matrix. Sounds like Rich has it all together, so maybe he could put the matrix together for the public document on grants?
Yes, we are.
Could be his outgoing mayoral activity.
We are moving forward on that.
Thank you. The Chamber Board of Directors meeting is coming up this Friday. And I wanted to remind everybody that the Thanksgiving dinner, Community Thanksgiving dinner is coming up, and they're still looking for donations. So you can drop those off, I think, at the fairgrounds. But if anybody would like to join in for the community dinner, it's a wonderful event. And I believe that if you need transportation, that that can be provided as well. You can call Terry Sandler at, I sound like a radio ad. You can call Terry Sandler at four-six-four-five-five-nine-one. She's headed that up for years. And, you know, maybe we should do something that she's, she deserves some recognition. She's worked so hard on that dinner for so many years. I wanted to say that the, our Strategic Options Committee meeting for the Camden Group and Sutter Coast Hospital, our meetings have tentatively ended. We, there is a final report that has been posted on the Sutter Coast Hospital website that you can review. I believe that there's also a webinar that might still be available for you to watch as well. The Board of Direct, the local Sutter Board of Directors will be taking considerations from the group and from the hospital into consideration at their next board meeting, which I think is in the first week of December. After that takes place, then we'll have more information on what they actually have decided. And at that point, I will ask Linda Horn, the Executive Director of Sutter Coast, to come to a council meeting and report out to our, our group and, and to the community. I think that they would be more than happy to do so. I was actually, I had on my list to ask if we were going to have a city-county joint meeting before the end of the year. We usually do. So just wanted to ask if that was in the works.
We, at our meeting just the other day with that, we're talking about some items that we may. I don't know if we can do it by December, but it's going to be at the early part of next year, for sure.
Okay, great. And then I just wanted to say that the Warriors won their first playoff game against Justin Seana High in Napa, which was a big upset. And so they are traveling this weekend to Healdsburg, where they actually played in the first round and beat them last year. So we have high hopes that we may make it into the third round of playoffs this year. So it's pretty exciting. Go Warriors.
Thanks, Kelly. Mr. Gastinow?
Yeah, I, I, too, attended the Intergovernmental Relations Committee with Mr. Holly. It's a very positive meeting. It's, it's a good one to go. It's actually a public meeting, and we get to hear a lot of positive things from the fair, the harbor, the parks, everybody. It's, and even CR and Rural Human Services. It's a really, really good positive thing. Another meeting, you know, we always talk about the extracurricular stuff we do besides doing council business, is that I attended a, a pre-planning meeting-
new council, um, business, is that I attended a, a pre-planning meeting because next year, March, is the fiftieth anniversary of the nineteen sixty-four tsunami.
Wow.
So, uh, there's a, a big push now to do a multimedia project of the planning of a drill that's going to happen, a countywide drill that's going to happen in March of next year. Uh, there also, we want to do some stuff to celebrate the tsunami, like having downtown walking tours and other stuff like that, that does impact, you know, our history here in Crescent City. So I think those are some things that the city, we should get behind as we get into it, because we should, you know, it was a tragedy, but it, from that, we have learned a lot about our community, and now we have one of the, you know, the best harbors on the whole west coast. Uh, we have the most alert community for any disaster, we're always prepared. Cindy Henderson from the Office of Emergency Services is doing a fantastic job. So these are things, we're also going to be working with the high school and the youths and try to get them to help us with a lot of the video production. So it's bringing, bringing the youth in and getting them to learn about our past. And one of the really cool things is I was digitizing an old video, civil defense video from like nineteen sixty-six or something like that, the year I was born, and I, my father was in there.
Oh, that's neat.
It was very, it was very nice to see him as a young man. Um, and so we're, we're getting together a lot of good stuff, and I think that we might want to bring back to discussion of tsunami way for Front Street. Mayor to be Mr. Holly.
Thank you, Mr. Gasanova. I wanted to, to thank Kelly for her participation with the Camden Group. I know that's difficult in our community, and thank you for doing that and for volunteering to do it for us. I appreciate that, and we all do. I also attended the solid waste meeting and the Altico and our, and our county-city two-by-two that we had, and I wanted to say, you know, local transportation company, one of the good, local transportation committee, one of the things that you may take a look at now as part of our gateway on the north side of town, is there are brand-new curbs and sidewalk on the west side of Highway one-on-one north, so over where Alyssa's Custom Coffee is, and there's a computer store there. That sidewalk now goes all the way from the shopping center all the way to the end of those businesses, and a lot of people walk that way to take a shortcut to go to Walmart or to, to the hospital. And so that's all curb now, and when you come off the freeway into town, you can see that sidewalk, and so people aren't walking on the side of the road anymore. And that's just the first part of that area, because there's eventually going to be a crosswalk there, a lighted crosswalk when we get the funds to do it, but that's a start. So that's one thing that's very visible in our community. And that comes from meeting attendance that we do as a council, along with the county and the Harbor District and, and other members for these committees. So with that, I think...
Rich, I might also mention, I, I believe what they said at the meeting was that Caltrans is also looking not just at the, at the ends of the gateway, just north and just south of town, but they're going to be evaluating the whole way through town, a one-on-one. So that's, that's going to help a lot with safety.
You know, does, it makes me think, does our local planning commission get involved in these discussions?
Well, the, the old, Caltrans will look at the, the road configuration, and someone has brought up the, someone, one of the members of Altico said, well, what about a signal light at Third and L? Do we need that? So Caltrans will evaluate that stuff, and then they come to the city, well, they come to Altico, and we represent the city.
Right.
We could do more in-depth, though, like the planning, if they really have a, a, something that's really going to change our runway.
They're sending their safety officer, we're not having a meeting next month, but they'll, they're sending their safety officer from Humboldt County to our meeting in January, and, and that, he will, I believe it'll be, Ralph Martinelli will be reevaluating some of the, some of the sections.
And I know we've, we've talked about this in the past, maybe not with this particular council, but I've always encouraged for us to get like a quarterly update from the Planning Commission Chairperson. I don't think it's ever really happened. Um, I know I've requested it several times, and I'm not sure if it's just what the issue is, but, um, I, I've always felt like the city council and the, and the planning commission are kind of on separate ends of the table. Not that we don't have the same goals in mind, but we don't communicate very often, and that it might be a better way for us to, um, not only just know more about what they're involved with, but as, well, you know, it'll give us the, the opportunity to really engage with them often and support the decision-making process that they go through.
Okay. Well, we can work on that, I know we get their minutes.
Bringing it up again.
Okay. We did have a joint meeting, but it's probably been a couple of years ago.
It's been, it's been a long time.